All right, let's call this meeting the Berlin Boilston Regional School Committee to Order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thanks, everybody. Tonight, we have Tracy Novak with us from MAS C to talk about superintendent, superintendent's search process moving forward.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I felt like it had been a while since I had actually been with you all, although, as you'll see, spent a significant amount of time in the district recently. But it was last time I was with was actually May. So what I have given you that you have in front of you on paper at this point, this, once you've done some editing, you will obviously have things electronically, is first of all, the brochure we're putting together for you, right? Which is what this piece of paper looks like. You are still completing one part of it here this evening, so just so you know. But it does have all the information that several of you actually were kind enough to start to put together, and Laura was driving force behind that, but there was also a lot of work that happened to the administration and so forth. That actually has, you know, an outline of what the district is. The selection criteria is actually what we're going to be selecting tonight, has the information of the timeline that you've already established, a little picture of the county content, and the application process, as well as the description of the community sounds. Okay, so that's a fairly standard format that we use for all of our searches, so that people actually not only get an idea of what the position is, but where it is that they potentially would be going. The report that is the two staple pages that are behind you is what we're going to be reviewing at some depth this evening, which then is what gives the draft selection criteria that's already on the brochure, but obviously that is subject to your approval this evening. So the, because you started as early as you did, you essentially were able to, as we spoke of last May, launch the search at the same time that you launched the school year, which I think is a, is a nice way of doing it. Everybody's sort of, you know, getting into gear at the same time. It's a lot of communication that's going home, and so you were able to take advantage of that. So you did launch a survey the first week of school. Also, as part of the back-to-school sessions that the faculty had here at Tohonto together this year, all faculty participated even before school started in a joint input session, and also were made familiar with the timeline, so they actually know how things are working. Both elementary PTOs held sessions for parents, and there was also a session that was offered here at Tohonto, both all of that happening in September. I did also spend all of really the school day of September 16th in the district, meeting first with central administration and sort of everybody in the central administration offices, in most cases one-on-one, and then also meeting with the principals, and then here at Tohonto with the assistant principals as well. And then on September 15th, we did something which I have not done before. Usually I do look for student input as part of the session. I think it's actually a really important aspect of perspective on what you're looking for. And we, I actually spent all three lunches in this room and had a great hype squad out during lunch. The administration was fantastic in terms of, as students were finishing eating, they were encouraged to come in and actually give feedback. I've never had the number of students actually give input to a superintendent search as what you all had. And let me just encourage you that in general, they were very enthusiastic about giving feedback, and I think that it can be easy to assume that all student feedback is going to be about, and yes, there's some of this, about things like, you know, whether or not there's enough junior parking, and whether or not there's particular kinds of food in the cafeteria. Yep, absolutely. There are also some, as you'll see as we go through this, some input that I think you'll find useful, both in terms of your larger job, and also in terms of the superintendent search itself. So the graph you have for you on the front page is just the people who completed the online survey. Over the course of the time that we had it open, there were 86 people who completed the survey. The vast majority of them, as you see there, were parents. Not really surprising. It's an easy way for parents to actually give feedback. Just keep in mind that everything that I share with you here is not only based on the survey, it's also based on all the other input sessions that we ran over the course of the time, including with faculty and with staff, students. I did think, though, that the word cloud, that when the question was asked, were the strengths of the Berlin Boilston Regional Schools, which of course was asked really to everybody who gave input, that the word cloud that you see there before you actually gives you their perspective on what was true regardless of who I asked. Community came up over and over and over and over again. It came up with the faculty repeatedly, came up with the students repeatedly, far and away part of what, you know, I heard from, from families in terms of, you know, things like why they choose to send their students here. So that I think is something that's actually really important for you to know. The schools themselves are seen as supportive, positive communities for students to be growing in. The staff is very positive about their own community, of who they work with. There was more than one teacher who spoke about, you know, why they choose to teach here is because of the people they get to teach with, and that they feel supported in that. And really, the larger community is seen as supporting the schools, and being also a supportive place for families and for students. So that is something for you to know in terms of a strength that you're, among other things, going to kind of bring to the table for people who might want to apply here. Just did want to comment a couple of things that students really appreciated. It's one of the first times that I've seen students make sure that teaching was something that people understood they saw as a strength, which itself is a pretty articulate thing for them to note. They did appreciate the breadth of both coursework here at the high school and extracurriculars, although there was also a request for more of both. In fact, the very first word I saw go up in the positive board, because I do keep an eye on those things, was art in terms of a district strength. I thought that was useful. There's a lot of appreciation for the work that's been going on in terms of communication. And again, this was something that was true across the various groups, so that, you know, certainly families were appreciating that, but also that was feedback that was coming in from faculty and from staff. In terms of other things that, that the district clearly sees moving forward and as works in progress, so that was one. The work that's been going on at central administration in terms of reorganization and restructuring. Professional development, and you'll see this sort of show up on both a strength and a weakness, because it's seen as developing. There was a lot of appreciation, I mean, the faculty was doing this on the day they actually had professional development, so it was fresh in their mind. But for there to be some attention paid to this not feeling like something that was sort of put together in the last minute, but was something that was actually structurally appropriate, part of what was going on across the thing. And then also ongoing work that I know that you all are all part of, in terms of making sure this really functions as a single district and not has three separate schools that happen to have the same administration. And that's, you know, that's something that's true of any district that is kind of working, you know, recently fully regionalized, that's something that we see very commonly. But there is appreciation that that's not something that magically happens, and that that's work that's going on. And I did want to mention, and again, this is somebody's expression in their mind because of when I was student input, but the students at Tohonto are very enthusiastic about food here. I've never seen food mentioned so many times in terms of a positive. And in particular, there is an enormous amount of enthusiasm for the orange chicken here at Tohonto. I wouldn't want to refer to it as ballot stepping, but there was definitely an organized effort to make sure that was known. I had already shared that with the school nutrition staff, because I thought they should know right away, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that as well, because those are important parts of a day, too. In terms of the work to be done, I've kind of already mentioned this, but there's definitely a recognition, and I know this is something that you all are sensitive to as well, that essentially there was, there was a lot of things that needed to happen, and those things are happening, but those things aren't necessarily going to come to completion right away. So everything from the work that's been going on in central office, the work that's been going on around the budget, the work that's been going on in terms of making sure that professional development relates to the needs of the faculty and of the district, incorporates all staff, including paraprofessionals. And again, that creation of a single school district is all things that are happening and are ongoing. Something that can be easy to not know about unless you're in the position of it is creation of protocols, so standard protocols for things like hiring and that kind of thing, is work that is currently being done by administration. It's not all the way there. That isn't something that you all, you all, of course, the policy end, right? You create your policies, and then administration does the protocols. It is seen as something that is happening. It's still a work in progress, and they're getting there. So that, I think, is important for you to know, that we'll, you'll see that carry over in terms of then what you need for the person who's going to assume the superintendency. Couple of things in student flag, students' flag in terms of needs, ongoing and increasing need for mental health support and for combating bullying. And something that was specifically spelled out was that was a request for this to be about increased staff and increased staff capacity, rather than, we're all familiar with the sort of, let's all do an assembly about being nice to each other kind of thing, and students were questioning the value of that kind of input rather than more structural kinds of input. As mentioned, appreciate the extracurriculars and the breadth of coursework, but interest for, in particular, support beyond sports. And also, a couple, there was more than one place where I saw a question of whether or not, making sure that there is equity in terms of support for boys' sports versus girls' sports. And also, back in the food realm, support for students who have food allergies. So in terms of feedback, again, it was across all realms. There was a lot of discussion around district governance. We saw this with the parents, we saw this with faculty, saw this, you have to do some interpretation, but also even saw this with students. The community wants to ensure that the school committee is leading through its very specific legal role in terms of policy, goal-setting, budget, that the committee operates as a body, right? You only have legal authority when you operate as a body. Making sure that the day-to-day oversight of the district lies with the superintendent and the administration, and the committee is working professionally together in public and elsewhere, that disagreement is principled rather than personal, and that decisions that are made by the body, we all know this community struggles, but decisions that are made by the body then are supported by all members of the body regardless of what their perspective was. And I just want to reflect to you that it's clear that the community understands that the work of the school committee is actually very important, and the way that you do that and the governance that you work together as a body to give to the district is something that they see not only ongoingly as important, but particularly want to flag in terms of the search of the superintendent, in part because you're obviously the public face of the district at this point, right? So taking that all together, there then also, I asked, what does the district mean in terms of leadership? So we've already gotten a couple of places where you've seen that flagged. The district is looking for a leader who's strong in their position and brave in their principles. Strong and brave, but they came up more than, in more than one place, but I particularly saw that from students. They want to have somebody who fills that role, a bridge between staff and school committee, while being visible and active in the schools and in the community. They want the work of the protocols, process, and budget to continue in the district office, and not just sort of, that's not like a, that's not just a, you got to do next year, it's that there is work in progress in improving practice. There is a perceived need for a leader who's politically savvy and experienced to continue the relationship building that's been going on with the towns. And there's interest in the work of continuing that creation of a single district meaningfully moving forward. And then I did want to specifically note, students emphasized repeatedly the importance of having someone who supports all students, and this came in a couple of different ways in terms of expressions about diversity, in terms of expressions about, thank you, actually, my face is mine, in terms of various expressions of identity. So, you know, that was very clear from the students, I want to make sure that was in there. And then, these were all words that came up more than once as well. They want someone who is trustworthy, who is kind, and who's modest. So what you see then in front of you here is also what is on the draft invitation to apply, which, this is my draft for you, for you, which is based on all of the feedback that you saw. The way that it gets phrased is the Berlin Boilston Regional School Committee seeks: "An engaged, experienced educational leader with a track record of managing the complexities and relationships among and between stakeholders. An excellent communicator throughout the community. A creator and sustainer of a positive culture among staff and students. A trained professional who understands and maintains the roles and relationships necessary for good district governance. A skilled negotiator, able to work with municipal officials and offices, especially related to budgeting for district operations. A champion for educational excellence, with a focus on the whole child. And a trustworthy, kind professional with a heart for children." Mr. Chair, that's my report, and so really what I need from you, having you to discuss this at any greater length and take any questions, the one thing that I do need from the committee is a vote on the selection criteria.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about the selection criteria, comments?
No, but I do think our website has an S at the end of it, but I don't think it does. B B R S D dot org.
That's a very important thing.
Mike's last name wasn't spelled, too, on the green sheet.
Yep.
You're right, thank you. Good catch.
That guy actually exists in town.
Oh, really?
Dulman, yeah.
Yeah, that's funny.
Silver Springs.
When you read the first bullet, I was kind of like, I don't know, it just sounded like a lot of words. And then, and then I thought that one of the following bullets might cover that. Let's see, one, two, three, four, maybe the fourth bullet potentially covers it.
At least in part, there's overlap, certainly.
I think stakeholders is, like, parents, maybe town, you know, staff.
Tracy, where in here can we get specific about things? We've talked about before as a committee about having someone who, and the towns will talk about this, too, having someone who's experienced in the role, not necessarily someone who's brand new to it, who might come in, use it as a training ground, and then go on to a bigger district for bigger pay, something like that?
So I will say two things about that. You can certainly say that you're looking for someone, something like to establish relationships in the district, or who is a longstanding. You can't really, there's two things that I would say, though, in terms of, I would caution you about how you phrase it and how you limit things. If you limit yourself only to people who actually are currently serving superintendents, the first danger is that you won't get done any applicants. And that, and I say that, by the way, without there actually having been any searches yet this year, right? That just varies from year to year. Some years, there's a lot of superintendents who are interested in moving, some years there are superintendents who aren't. The other thing is that that can attract, depending on what else you post here, people who are in it for the last three, and so they're looking to boost their salary or go for retirement. And I know that's not what you're looking for either.
Yeah, my next question is, how do we avoid that?
Yes, right. So you can certainly, so I think there's probably two things. I think you can try to, try to figure out if you can use some language in here. I mean, I would say that there isn't a school committee out there, however, that's looking for someone who isn't going to stay for at least a period of time. So that's a pretty common phenomenon, and it's difficult to screen for that, because ultimately, some of that is about the relationships that are established here in terms of, you know, does this become a place where somebody wants to stay and work? What are the relationships like with, certainly with you all, with the community and that sort of thing? So, you know, it, some of it comes through in things like trained professional, things like a sustainer, and so forth. You can certainly try to ask that question in an interview about whether or not you would plan to stay. People can say anything at that point, and no one's going to tell you, no, I plan to leave in two years.
You'd be surprised.
I would be surprised, yes.
It's a check. Not. Okay.
And partly because of that danger on the other side, that would be caution of that, too, because you don't want someone who says, oh, well, I'm an experienced superintendent, but, and this is my hard best, you know, retirement.
Yeah. I know we had to be careful about questions around age, experience, things like that.
Well, you shouldn't be discriminating on that, but I mean, because of how the educator retirement system works in Massachusetts, you're usually not talking about people necessarily of any grade age. I mean, if you've entered the profession straight out of college or shortly thereafter, you aren't necessarily going to be all that old when you are fully vested. But, you know, that sort of question of, how close are you to being fully vested? It's not really what you'd ask in an interview, you do, that would be discriminatory. And just, I would make sure that you're not framing the position in such a way that it appeals to someone who's in that position.
What is, at the last bullet point, you add on, looking for a long-term relationship with our district. So, a trustworthy, kind, professional, with a heart for children, looking for a long-term relationship with our district. I don't know, that's too specific, just throwing ideas out.
Seeking long-term.
Like long walks on the beach, you know?
Take care of the new Cape Hill trip. Yeah, was anybody, what does anybody think about that? Do you want to say it again, Jess?
Just adding on, looking for a long-term relationship with our district, the last bullet point. So a trustworthy, kind, professional, with a heart for children, looking for a long-term relationship with our district.
Maybe add to build a long-term. What do you think about that?
To build, I like that.
Yeah.
Seeking, seeking to build.
Part of, yes, establishing.
Seeking is a nicer wording, I like that, than looking.
Seeking to build, a long-term relationship with our district.
Yeah.
More active.
Anybody else with any questions or comments?
If we're going to keep the first bullet, is it the best first one to open with? I feel like it kind of sends a little bit of a message there, like, there's a lot of problems. I don't know.
I think when they watch our meeting, they're going to realize there's been some complexities.
Yeah.
But opening with a positive is not a bad thing, like, like a champion for education with a focus on the whole child might be a better opening.
So keeping the statements, but reordering?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
I like that one.
Which, which one?
The second and last one.
Champion for education.
Oh, yeah, okay, move that to the front.
Do you want to flip-flop them, or do you want to just bump and engage down?
An alternative suggestion is the last two to the first two, and then bump the first one down to the last one.
Sure.
I, I actually like the last one, just because of the way it's like to build. I like, I like leaving that last one there, Jess, because of the work, because of the way you guys just words.
Sandwich.
Yeah.
All right, so you just move that second last one up to the front one, and just bump everything else down one?
Because that's, I mean, that's, that is a part of it, but it really is only a part of it, like.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Hey, Mike, all right, and Tracy, could I just comment on this as well, too? In terms of salary-wise, do we want to put a range in there if we know what our range is?
So that's the next thing.
Oh, sorry. Because that will definitely be a factor for.
Any other comments or questions on the criteria?
No, but there's two semicolons after the word seeks. It's just a takeout. I don't know if this is an actual copy that's going to go up under selection criteria the first sentence, the Berlin Boilston Regional School Committee seeks. Do you see what I've got?
Oh, yeah. Oh, there's two columns, yep.
Sorry, I called them semicolons.
Yep, correct.
Only one of them.
Good, good catch. Nope, that's, that is part of why we actually.
Oh, I'm looking on this.
So this one, which I think is what's actually going to go up. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you see that, absolutely, if you see anything like that, please absolutely share it with me. And this whole, the thing that I want you to vote this evening is actually the selection criteria.
You have proofreaders?
If you take this home and find it in 24, find something in 24 hours, let me know. I don't actually put this together, our communications person does, and I'm bringing this into her tomorrow.
Yeah. They'll proofread, go over everything, everything 10 times, yeah.
Yes, as long as, as long as all you're talking about is the typo, spelling, punctuation, those will, you know, it will be tomorrow. All right, so then, Mr. Chair, as anticipated by Mr. Nan.
Sure.
The next question that I'm going to ask you is about salaries. So we do actually now, because this is going to be posted in September, but will be up in October, our subject to the new state law, which says that you actually do have to give some salary parameters in a posting. So what I have for you, I did check in with MAS S to get where are we regionally, right? So you know where you're at in terms of what you actually have been spending recently. Obviously, that's something that you can keep in mind. What we do need to do is come up with a range, okay? So just that you know, in terms of your local, somewhat like districts, okay? And this is somewhat about where you're at, as well as the size. The salary rate, salary locally, keeping in mind that this is also superintendents that have all levels of experience, right? In Clinton, the superintendent there is making $176,000. The top end of the scale locally is actually Shrewsbury, where he's been there for a number of years, which is 149,500. So I can also.
Say that again.
149?
Two 49.
Two 40. It sounded like one.
556, yeah. Then, just to give you a couple of others, North Row, South Row is 232,000. Neshova Regional is 225,000, and Hudson is 204,000. And those are the ones that I have, so I, you know, I tried to, to give you the range. So taking that in addition to the information that you already have, we do need to come up with something that we would then put under salary and contract. Certainly, we would usually add the words, you know, to be negotiated, commiserate with experience, but you would, you do need to put, there do need to be dollar amounts on this.
Yeah.
Well, throw away Shrewsbury, because I think, I feel like he's an anomaly, I know him. What was the one that was the highest after Shrewsbury?
North Row, South Row, which is 232,000. And he's been there a number of years as well now.
And did, I don't know if you, I didn't hear the first one, if, if West Boilston was in there, I know it's not regional.
I don't, because West Boilston has a new superintendent, and MAS S didn't actually have 2025 data. So this is actually closed last year.
Yeah, they just hired, yeah.
Without getting into too much detail on discussing individual employees and their salaries, do we want to just say the low of 176 to the high of 232?
I don't, I think 232 is way too high for our district.
Yeah.
I would maybe say 210.
What does anybody else think?
Or 250. North Row has a lot of businesses.
I don't want to throw out a number that's not even in the realm of possibility, so like, throwing up 232 is.
Yeah, we're not, we're just not going to be able to do that with our budget, with our current budget and just knowing what's coming down the pipeline, so I feel like, you know, 210.
Keep in mind, whatever we do put out there, people are going to decide to apply or not apply.
They are, and if you're at 210, then you are only higher than Hudson and Clinton locally.
It's not a commitment to that number. It's like she said, it's to be negotiated, to be determined based on years, experience, and everything else. We know where we are right now.
Yeah, I just would hate for someone that comes in super experienced, thinking I'm at the high end, and goes through the interview process with that 232 number in their head, and us to come back and be like, yeah, we can do 210, and that's be the breaking point, you know what I mean? I don't know, that's, that's just my opinion. I just would, I don't want to be misleading. I'd rather have people know ahead of time, like, this is the top we can pay for top talent.
I mean, I, we don't know what our budget is next year. I know, I know we have limitations, but I don't feel like $10,000 off of that, if you're going to get someone who's going to lead us. Really, we need a good leader, and you get what you pay for, and the best are going to go with where they're going to get paid the money. And I'm not, I'm not, it's not all about the money, but I want to put a number out there that we can support, but we don't know, to say that we can't afford it is a presumption at this point, and we, we need a strong, I mean, when you look at all the adjectives that they used, there's no way we're going to get that unless we're willing to pay for it. That's just my thought.
Yeah. I mean, I might go up to 225 without having any idea.
That's, that's how, like, I've never done this before, so I don't, I don't want to, like, pigeonhole ourselves either, but like, my gut as like, a person, is that I would want to be honest, but maybe, and I think that like, 175 to 225 maybe is, but if it's going to be a deterrent, I don't want to do that either. I would defer to the professionals, I guess.
That's Tracy.
Tracy, do you, do you think a range to Beth's point of 175 to 225 is a good range? Because.
I think that does, I think that, I would say yes, because I think that does two things. I think it gives you a significant amount of flexibility, right? It also puts you more squarely within the realm of, of your region, right? Because the last thing you want to be doing is putting yourself in a position where, you know, we all know what the numbers are because these are public numbers, right? And you are in a position where you essentially have said, oh, well, we understand what the neighborhood is, but we don't, you know, we're, we're going to put ourselves in a different position, so. No, I think, I think, and I think you, I think you've also made the numbers nice.
Yeah, I like that too.
Great, 175 to 225.
Could we write in there like, potential, like something that pending? We could, not even pending budget, but like, open negotiation as well. I mean, is that a lot, like, you know, I know.
Yeah, that's, she said that.
I mean, it's always, you can put commiserate with experience. I think that we want to be careful about drawing too far back from it, only because, and I, and I say this not being a lawyer, but part of the requirement of the state law essentially is that someone comes in having some idea of what the salary is going to be that they're going to be offered. So it really, it is quite frankly designed to slightly remove power from the employer position and empower the employee who is in a better position to judge whether or not they actually want to apply for a position. So I mean, that is deliberate on the part of the.
So I just want to make something clear, because if I was a candidate, I'd be watching this.
Of course.
This, I'd be saying, are they saying that they're putting out 225, but they're not going to give it? If someone walks in the door and is worth 225, voting for, like, that's.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure, like, I know you don't realize how it's coming across.
No, my point.
To me, it sounds a little bit like.
No, my point is, what if we see, what if we see a rock star and we want to pay him 250? And we figure out we can have it in the budget, can we go higher?
I see what you're saying, okay, I, I.
Somebody from, yes. Like, like what if we have somebody who's got, you know, like 20 years' experience and they've got 10 left and they're just a perfect fit? And we're like, oh, we're all in love with the person and we're like, we really want this person, we want the person to stay. And we look at the budget, we're like, okay, we, this is, we actually can do this. We want this rock star, we want to be able to pay 230 or 240 or 250. If we only have that 225 range, if we find, and I'm not saying this is going to be in everybody, this is like a rare occurrence, would we be able to legally go higher than what we posted? I don't know how this works, I know how it works in business, that negotiation is negotiation. I'm asking, are we able to, are we set to that limit if we post it?
You can go higher, yes. I think, I think, I think the issue would be if you tried to go lower.
No, I would never want to do that, I don't think we would go lower.
So my argument is, if I thought I was worth 240 or, or 235.
Are they going to apply?
Are they going to apply? Or are they going to cross us off their list and go for the other districts?
I think so.
But that's why I would write.
Like, you're not limited to that, it's based on, like, to Tracy's point, it's based on, and, and to your point. It's based on experience, it's based on like rock star quality, like, we're not saying we're going to give you this much. I mean, even the, the, the superintendent of Shrewsbury, he's at 249, but he's been there a long time, like, he's earned that and he's earned the, you know, the, the accolades that go with it. So I'm not saying we should do 250, but may, like, to your point, maybe we should bump it a little bit higher, because you don't want to just get crossed off the list. If we can do it, like, if we find someone who's that phenomenal and we want to pay them that, like, where are we willing to go to?
A professional at this level who sees a cap on a range is not going to apply if they want more than that cap.
Because I wouldn't think.
Could we say 175 plus?
No.
So it has to be a range.
Yeah, that's, that's more where I'm heading, is I don't want to handcuff us to anything, because I feel like there's just, as we've, we've now done this how many times? So we know the pool of applicants, and we've done it for principles how many times? So we know the pool of applicants out there is a huge range of people. And I guess what I'm saying to Tracy's point, we have no idea if this is going to be a year where we're going to get a ton of applicants, or we're going to find some rock star that we love that's a perfect fit? Or if we're going to get someone that we're going to end up, okay, like, this could work, we're going to, you know, move forward with this.
So do you want to add that Shrewsbury range back in then?
Not really, because I, I, like I said, I think that would be like a one in a million, but I don't want to like handcuff us to like.
That one in a million, you're handcuffing us to not, that person not applying if it's not. Like, I'm not saying necessarily we should go up to 249, but maybe we should bump it up to where we think it's affordable, if it was the right person.
Yeah, what do you guys think? You know what I'm trying to say, like, I, I don't want someone.
You would like to put a realistic amount in, but then you want to also put like a caveat for that upper range that like you want to like flag it and be like, but don't not apply, because you can maybe wiggle, but like, it's, that's kind of hard to.
But it has to be the exact perfect fit.
That probably even gets to violate this new law.
Um, yes, although on the other hand, as some of you have already mentioned, that probably there's a very good chance that anyone who's applying is probably watching this meeting now.
So they understand.
Yeah.
Can we ask?
You are the perfect. But I, I, but I think it should, I think we should just be honest and forthright, not have someone have to fight for what they think they're worth. Like, if we think we can afford 240, and, you know, like with North Brochures, we're being 232. If we think we can afford 240, we should put what that range is, it doesn't mean we go that high. It means if we, whoever the person is, it's based on their qualifications. And, and we're going to decide on what it is, so we have that final say, but I just don't want anybody to see it and be like, I'm not going, because if I knew I was worth that money, it would just be an easy way to say, that's not where I'm going to apply. I know what you mean.
Do you want to say something, sir?
I'm sorry, sitting with this chair, so the only thing I want, also want you to look at is the optics of the rest of the admin team and what the next second salary is.
That's what I was thinking too.
In the district, right? So if you're looking at a range of 240, which I agree with Lori, like, so you're looking for that high-quality person, you, you, you got to be up at those ranges, but the next person's salary is a difference of about $80,000, the next person down in line. And so I've been trying in these last two, year and a half, trying to catch up some people to make some equity across that district. But if you're at the 240 range, which you're going to get the rock star that, the difference of that next salary is, is close to $80,000. That's a huge gap from the first person to the second.
And we couldn't.
And teachers.
Well, and that is not the same size as Tohonto. That is a, that's not, so what's, what's your difference in the size of a district?
So West Boylston superintendent that retired last year, who I think was there for like 25 years.
He was there a very long time.
It was 160,000.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, I always try to go like, I mean, I, tell me if this is crazy, I think about it by like home prices, right? And so I'm not going to, is that a bad way to think about it?
Um, I mean, I think we, we say that teachers need to live within commuting distance and that that's a good thing to keep in mind in terms of their salaries. On the other hand, we see some superintendents traveling pretty amazing distances, which is not to advocate for that. I'm not sure home prices are necessarily great. I, I think, I, I'm, I'm, I think I'm always concerned with us making financial decisions in school districts based on housing prices. I think that we tend to default to that a lot.
Yeah, so it's all right, so.
So Clinton's was 178 for this fiscal year, Google says. So in terms of your house prices.
Is that a question or a comment?
Jess just looked it up. This is just hard.
So you think, like, right, I just spitballing out here, like, Boylston's houses are more expensive because our school district is amazing, right? And so surrounding towns don't rank as high as we do, and so therefore I would think their salaries would match that levels of excellence, or so to speak, I don't know.
So I think what Tracy has done is given us comps for the towns that do touch us, at least some of them, right? Hudson, Neshova, Clinton.
I didn't think there was going to be one in Western, yes.
What's, what's that?
I figured there wasn't any point in giving you Western.
No, we're not, yeah.
No, no, no.
And so, I mean, we, we don't necessarily directly line up with Clinton, we don't directly line up to Hudson or any of these, right? No, no two are exactly alike, but.
We would have had to go, we would have had to go significantly out of the region to find something that was the same size. And then you start getting into kind of more big employment in terms of.
Cost of living in.
Cost of living ends up being very, very, very different, especially if you go too far east or too far west.
And so, you know, whenever you're looking at comps, right? You don't, you don't, you don't determine the market, the market determines the market.
Right.
So these are the comps, this, this is the range.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would, I would be fine with going 175 to, to 240 maybe, but I just.
I mean, 230 is fine too, I just don't, I, I mean, I, I don't, I'm just worried about that 225 cutoff.
Do you think starting at 175, which is the same as Clinton, kind of sends a message, maybe we should bump up the lower number a little bit?
I wouldn't suggest that, because you can't, as Tracy said, you wouldn't want to go below that if you, let's say we get a, you know, brand-new person to the position, we think they're going to be awesome, but are we going to take a $220,000 risk on someone who's never?
I'm just saying like 180, 180 instead of 176, something like that.
I rounded up, yeah, sure.
I would do, I know, because I think you can't really go lower. And what if we get somebody that was, isn't an assistant or a curriculum director, or somebody that has like, you know, 10 years of experience doing that? And they, they have a great resume and we're like, okay, we all love the person, again, think the person's a good fit. And maybe, you know, we find out, you know, our budget isn't, you know, we'll find out some budget stuff closer to when we're making the offer. I feel like we don't want to handcuff ourselves, I, I'd say keep the 175, because we could have somebody with, you know, like Mike said, brand-new, no experience, and, you know, because if we put out there the range is 180 and then we have somebody that's, you know, was making 120 or 130 or 140 as an assistant or a business manager, wanting to jump into this, 175 is a huge bump. For the first year, like Mike said, we could even do something like, you know, I know we've done it before for certain contracts in our district where start out the first year to his point at a lower level, and then the second year, the bump is like 20,000, you know what I mean? Right, I think that's what you're trying to say, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I agree with that, I'll keep that lower range at 175, I think.
So who's in favor of a range of 175 to 230?
I, I, I think that's good.
Does anybody want to go higher? All right, how's that sound? Nobody, last chance to say.
This is fine.
175 to 130?
175 to 130.
Yeah, 230, yeah. 149.
North Row is 232. Go to 235. I mean, they have a bigger tax base. I was kicking that around too, but I, I agree with you, they have a bigger tax base, they have a bigger district too.
Yeah, it's like double the size of ours.
I mean, if, if it comes down to it and the person wants to negotiate for 2,000 bucks, I'm all for it.
So then are we, are we satisfied then with where this leaves us in terms of the posting?
Is this, is this it for the posting?
That's it for the posting, yep.
Anybody have, anybody want to bring?
Any other places where there's double punctuation or we just tell anybody's name or?
Does anybody have any other things, any other comments or questions?
I didn't have the time to read the community profile, but.
You did that, Megan.
Did you, did somebody proofread?
Oh, I didn't, no, but we can do it tonight, Tracy.
All right, okay.
That's my plan.
Yeah, that's what happens, kind of, it's like, this is the one I wrote, like, somebody needs to proofread this, Lisa, that's you.
Just make sure we're sticking only with proofreading, don't change content.
No, there shouldn't be a need to change this content. Most of this was written by AI, but yeah, please, if you want to proofread the type, double-spaced or combed or did something wrong somewhere.
It does seem like there should be either indents for all the paragraphs or none.
So maybe after, after the meeting, if you guys want to go through it and mark it up before Tracy leaves, but as far as content goes.
Yeah, it's, it's based largely on our last.
The last one in AI.
Yeah, so those two together, yeah.
It wasn't really.
All right, Tracy, you need a vote on this item?
Um, it would be great if you actually did vote, or even if you just confirmed the salary and the selection criteria.
Okay. Could I have a motion then to approve the selection criteria as presented, but bumping the second-to-last bullet up to the first bullet and then bumping everything else down? Uh, let's do that one first, let's do one at a time.
And add, and, and as amended.
And as amended, yes, to build the lasting relationship.
And relationship with our district.
As amended. May I have that motion?
Someone, second.
Lori and Lisa, everything good, everybody want to say anything, final?
Do we need to add in that we're changing the website, does that matter?
That is a.
Yep, that's second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone against it? Okay, the motion passes, thank you. Tracy, could I have a motion, please, to approve the salary range for the job posting to be from $175,000 to $230,000?
Someone.
Megan?
Second.
Lisa? Anybody have any final thoughts on that one? That was the correct numbers, right?
Yeah.
All right.
I, I just had a quick question. So I, I don't know, I can ask if there's going to be another vote on this community profile, but I, I know as you've only mentioned the football team, and I know, so I see the national blue ribbon, but I didn't know if we could mention our drama shows.
Why don't we do a motion for the community profile after we vote on the salary range? How about that? All right, any questions on the salary range? All right, all who's in favor of that? Anyone against it? All right, the motion passes, Tracy, 175 to 230.
Great, thank you.
Jess, you have some comments on the community profile?
Yeah, I haven't read the third paragraph, so perhaps it's a moot point.
It's not in there. I couldn't find anything online about soccer and drum, like, I just don't know, because I have to kid at Tohonto. I was like, didn't we win a lot of championships for soccer?
Or in the finals last year.
I mean, if you wanted to add a sentence or two, I, I don't know if it's too late for that.
We can't add too much, only so we don't run out of room.
Totally, I just, just, I don't know, about our drama productions every year or, I don't know, I don't, does, a band doesn't do any competitions anymore, right? So I don't know, or, or female sports or Model UN or something, I don't know.
The girl soccer final for the last, how many years, two? I mean, I just don't want.
So what if I worked with?
How old have we did this?
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry, Tracy, sorry.
No, I just want to say, what if I worked with both Mr. Ginnam and the High School Administration to give a sentence to your point, to try to get the balance? Honestly, the students are even talking about, right?
I totally agree, and actually I did Google like girls soccer and there was no like actual, it was like out of newspaper articles. And I'm like, ew, I don't know if this is right or not, and I just didn't live through it, so I don't know myself, so that's.
So why don't we do, why don't we do this? Can I get a motion, please, to authorize Tracy Novick to update the community profile after working with the superintendent and athletic director to include some additional information about equitable sports teams?
Activities.
And activities.
Activities, yeah, exactly, to make sure that the only thing that we were not going to mention was the one to your point. Absolutely.
So that will give, uh, could I have that motion, please?
Second.
Jess and Megan, uh, so that Tracy will work with Al and Julie to, and, and maybe the art department and whoever else.
Can you just give 30 more seconds to read the third paragraph, sorry?
Yeah, because I was going to say, most of this came from the last.
There's a motion on the table right now to authorize Tracy to work on this. Is, uh, do you want to change something on that or what are you going to do?
So possible amendment for someone to consider to the current motion is perhaps in the closing sentence of that third paragraph. I know Tohondo newsletters have like stronger, stronger together or together we can or something like that.
Change this year.
It just, I think together we can, I think is a newer one.
But every school has a different, right?
No, no, indeed, indeed, but I, I think it, it embodies what we're trying to do. So I know that it had the, you know, all the, the mission statements from all the schools, but it just might be a nice little.
This year says together we can.
Together we can.
I'm just getting worried about spacing now, right, Tracy, we're coming right to the end of that, but adding a, just couples, a sentence about female sports in the regions. Do we trust Tracy and Al to come up with something that encompasses everything in a single sentence? Or do we want to scrap this motion and spend some time rewriting the whole?
In discussion of that motion, I would say, like, I know the schools all have their different mottos, like be, be you, be one of something from four three Bs, if it be BS.
Earths.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not positive with Berlin, so perhaps looking at all three and coming up with some. Yes.
All right, uh, any other comments? All in favor? Anyone against it? Okay, Tracy, thank you, that motion passes.
Excellent, so we'll be working on the odds tomorrow. Excellent. So we'll be working on the office tomorrow. Our aim is to try to have a post by the end of the week and make sure that you all know once it is out.
And and then do we just email you any feedback that we find, like tonight?
Yes, if you if you find that we've we've misspelled anything else or have any additional punctuation or anything of that nature, yeah, just shoot me an email and I'll, this is going in with me to the office tomorrow. Um, so I'll I'll add it to my notes. Thanks for, thanks for asking. Um, okay, so then the one remaining thing that, um, for you to do this evening, um, is to talk about your search committee or your screening committee. Um, as you may remember, but I think this is an important thing to review. Um, for for any public body in Massachusetts, um, that is hiring, um, that has hiring authority, their hiring has to be done in public session, right? So you'll remember, for example, we did the interim superintendentcy that was opposed to public meeting and the interviews were public and people could come and it was recorded. Um, the open meeting law does allow public bodies to do a first round screening, um, in executive session. And the law specifies that this is in order for you to, um, gain, um, a broader breadth of candidates because there simply are people who won't apply if the applications are public. Um, however, that screening committee cannot have a quorum of the, um, public body on it. Um, it can have a subcommittee, it can also not have any members of the public body. Those are both options that are available. Um, so that is the, that is what the search committee is. That's what the screening committee is. They're meeting under an exception to the open meeting law, master law, chapter 38, which is provided specifically to public bodies essentially to get better candidates. It's exactly what the law says. Um, in putting together your screening committee, um, there's a number of decisions that are before you. Um, if you decide to make it anything other than a subcommittee of the school committee, you need to decide kind of who the seats are, right? Um, I'm going to offer you a number of recommendations. This is something that is under your purview. Um, so just to be clear, as as always, these, my recommendations are based on, you know, my professional experience and what MASC has has experienced, um, rather than anything else. The first thing that I will say is that when it comes to putting school committee members on the search committee or not, you essentially have kind of two, two ways that you can go. And they are, um, as much about messaging as really about anything else. Um, so there are some school committees that want to make sure that the committee community is very clear that this is a search committee. Um, this is a school committee decision that the search is being done by the school committee. And they think it's very important for there to be representation on the school committee. Um, there also are committees that want to communicate to the community that they want the community's voices to be heard. Um, and to be heard in such a fashion where they don't feel that they're having to potentially, um, you know, that they're, that things are going to be sort of steered or run by those who are running out ultimately making the decision. The other two additional cautions I will offer is this. Um, because the search committee operates entirely in executive session and they operate entirely under confidentiality. And that confidentiality, by the way, extends beyond the scope of the search. So the confidentiality is for always. You do not ever get to say, here are people who applied other than the finalists because you have still violated the terms of confidentiality. You still could very well do harm to that person's employment and do harm to the district. Um, so the first thing is, if part of what you kind of feel important about your school committee search is that you share information and that you sort of have a drive to do that and don't think that you could actually keep things confidential, then please don't sign up for it because it's going to essentially conflict with maybe the reason why you're here. Um, the other thing is that there are committees that I've worked with in the past that have felt that, um, they're sort of still wrestling through their own ability to keep things confidential. And it may be that the committee sometimes says, you know what? We're going to have that like done by others. We're not going to put, sort of put ourselves in the middle of it. Um, and we're going to have them come back to us whatever their decision is. The other thing, of course, is that if it's going to turn into something where people end up feeling conflicted about, you know, someone got to be on the committee and someone doesn't, like, then that's probably one where you may want to say, let's take a pass anyway. That is the first decision. I'm going to run through all of them and then we'll come back to discussion. Um, it is a good idea to have someone from, if you're going to go beyond the subcommittee, it's a good idea to have someone from central administration. My recommendation on this and sort of going forward is going to be based on this thing that you've already decided. You've already set the timeline. You've already set the search committee dates. So the first question that anyone who's potentially signing up for this needs to answer is, yes, indeed, I can be there on October 15th, October 27th, and the evenings of November 3rd. That's already what you've set up. You can't ship that now because we're going to mess that with the, with your ending deadlines if you change anything at this point. Um, those have already been chaired. The teachers have already had it since the first week of school. Um, the timeline is already out there in the public. People are already making decisions based on that.
Can you say that date again? It's hard. I know we have it.
Yeah, so the search committee is being trained on October 15th.
Oh, great, great, okay.
They're meeting for their first meeting on October 27th. I will add, just as a side note, that that previous weekend of the 25th and 26th is one that search committee members should be setting aside for time to review for applications. There's not a, not a meeting during that. And then the evenings of the week of November 3rd, and all of the, all of the meetings will be in the evening. Sorry.
So it's not just, it's not just November 3rd. It could be any day that week.
It would be, and it will probably, it will be more than one day for sure. Because we will, the interviews will be, they'll be, they'll be running over multiple evenings. You'll be seeing more applicants than that.
Um, can I ask the question?
Uh huh.
So just to clarify, this search subcommittee or whatever we decide, whoever, the search committee would interview everyone? Or just, how would we?
So if you refer to the, you probably don't have the timeline in front of you. Well, the search committee does, nope. And of course, we last talked about this in May, so we're now talking about things that are, you know, several, several months out from you. Um, the position we'll post this week. Applications are going to come into our office. They are confidential applications. The only people who see them are me and actually Emory, who organizes them in our office. On October 15th, the search committee is going to get trained. They get together in person. We train them in open meeting law, confidentiality, um, executive sessions, conflict of interest. Those who have a conflict of interest to declare, sign that form. Everyone signs a confidentiality form. Um, if necessary, they'll elect a chair. Uh, that all happens before they essentially get anything. The application's, the period closes on October 24th. All of the applications are electronically then shared with the search committee, um, who then have the responsibility of reviewing it confidentially on their own, not in their living room, not right, um, that weekend, coming prepared to the meeting that we then will have on the 27th. In the meeting on the 27th, two things will happen. The first is the committee will, in public session, because the attorney general has determined the status of that public session, um, determine the topics of the questions they want to ask in the interview. They then will go into executive session, under the exception in 38, to consider the applications that have been submitted. They will talk about all the applicants and then they will decide who to interview. Those interview, the people they should select for interviews, then we term semifinalists under the attorney general's terminology. I then will line up interviews for those semifinalists to come in for executive session interviews with the full search committee during the week of November 3rd. And that's why we block off the whole week because we don't know how many applications you're going to get. We don't know how many semifinalists the search committee is going to bring in. Um, we also don't know what other kinds of restrictions we may be running with in terms of that. Once they have completed all of the interviews, again, in executive session, the search committee will make a determination of who they want to move forward as finalists for you all. One thing I will tell you now is you will receive at least three finalists. I'm going to tell you that in advance because what happens after they select the finalists is I call the finalists and say, the search committee of the Berlin Boys and Regional School Committee would like to move forward as the finalists. Do you accept? And sometimes people say no. If they say no, and you only had two people and one of them dropped out, we then would need to restart the search because you cannot select your superintendent in executive session. So that's why I'm going to tell you, you're going to get at least three, um, because we're going to set you up so that we don't have that happen. Um, and then you meet on November 10th and the search committee reports out to you in a public session, at which point you then have, the the ball is back in your court. The finalists are publicly announced. And then we're, then I'm working with them and with the district to set up visits with you, I'm sorry, visits for you in their districts, visits for them here, followed then by your interviews in public session.
So everyone on the committee would have to be available on November 10th as well?
Uh, yes.
And then when, when we go to the districts and then they, that's just the school committee that does that?
That is, so it is not only just the school committee, it is less than a quorum of the school committee. So I will ask you to make sure that I'm clear on who has, who's on what subcommittees so that I'm not sending subcommittees together. Um, and it will be entirely, one of the things that I will ask you to have available for me the night of the 10th is, here is my availability during the weeks of the 17th and the 23rd during the school day. Now, sometimes the answer is I can't be at all. Sometimes the answer is I can do these two days, but, um, that's something that I'll need so that I then can work with them to arrange their visits and your visits.
Do you know what, like, the typical turnaround for those days to be set are after the 10th?
The typical turnaround for the?
So like, right, so for example, my whole schedule is blocked for that week right now, so I'm curious what, like, do you try to do, I mean, the next day is a holiday, right, and then the conference? So I'm just curious, like, what is your prediction on when we would know?
So the finalists, because the finalists are going to know that they're finalists sometime during week of the 3rd, part of what I leave them with is start to figure out when your district can host and start to figure out when you can come visit. Ideally, I'm walking in the night of the 10th with some of that information already. And then the sooner we can sort of get your end of that, and also will already have had information from your district of, we absolutely can't have anyone on Wednesday or whatever, but you could send finalists here, X, Y, Z. Um, ideally, we're within that day or so, and yes, you're right, I'm then moving, we're then doing the conference right away on the 13th. Um, that's right, the 12th. The, but ideally, we are those couple of days then saying, okay, so these two people are going to be going to this district on this day and so forth. Yes, I would, I would always prefer to have as much, I I will do as much ahead of time before the finalists are announced as I can. Um, and, you know, then some of it also then gets into how far are you having to travel and does that sort of thing matter too? Yep, and then we'll, then you have then a week that the interviews are. I don't, you're not going to need five evenings for that regardless of what happens, but that's going to be around, you've had the visits in both directions, um, and you have an evening in common or two evenings. And then also, you know, one of the questions is, once the finalists come out, you have four, if you have four finalists, do you want to see two and two? If you have, you know, four, three finalists, do you want to try to do three in one evening? Like, that's going to be something for you all to decide.
And that's the week of December 2nd?
And that's the week, the week of December 1st too.
So we visit their schools before we interview them?
Yes.
So like as a school committee member, if I'm not on the search committee, I'm going to see their resumes?
Yep.
And then I'm going to go to their school and see their surroundings?
So it won't be, so not every school committee member will go to every district because we can't send all of you out to everyone?
Right, yeah, I don't, okay.
Yes, but you, but.
So I'm going to go to my school. I'll go to whatever one I'm assigned to.
Correct.
But I will not have met the person yet, so I'm looking at their school without meeting the person.
So it it is not uncommon for the person to greet the visiting school committee members
Okay.
at the beginning of the day, simply to say, welcome to my district, dah 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 dah. Um, they then leave you because you don't want them influencing the conversations that you've had.
Ah, so you're literally getting a blind opinion from?
And part of what you'll be getting from me is we have a packet of, um, questions that we've compiled over time, which there's a section in there that's interviews, but there's also a section in there on visiting the district of questions you may want to ask the people that you meet with on your district visit.
Okay.
Yes, so yeah, and then what will happen then, just to complete the sort of Megan's question, um, when you, after you've completed your interviews, when you move into deliberation, my recommendation for the chair will be have everybody report out, right? So so and so went to this district, so and so went to this district, this is what they saw, these are the reflections you have. So you have that all in common before you then move into deliberation.
Where, when is that happening?
So that would be happening after your interviews, but before you actually start to say, and I would like to hire this person. So that, in other words, you all have the same information as much as you have.
So, so like the week of December 1st, it would happen before that, right?
No, so you would, you would, so what you're doing is you are, think of it as, you've got some information because you went to that one place and Lori has some information because she went to that place. You all have the interviews for each of your people. Then the next thing you're going to move into is deliberation. But part of the information you need for deliberation is what you know, what Lori knows. That Mike would then say, so we're going to have each of you speak about your visit. And it may be that you went with someone else. And you would then say, you know, I'm going to cover this part, she's going to cover this part, or, you know, I'm covering this and they're going to add if there's something to be added.
So this deliberation is before or after the finalists come in for interviews?
It's after the interviews before you select.
So it'll be December 9th probably?
It will, December 9th.
Well, that's when we have a regular meeting.
Well, December 2nd is superintendent and finalist interviews.
Yes, you, depending on how you go, you may actually make the selection anything. I would not recommend a specific date for your next regular meeting.
So we'll.
So it'll be interviews, discussion about the different schools and then the possible.
Yep, and that may, again, that may happen one evening. It may happen multiple evenings, but it's going to happen in the same span of time.
And Tracy, can I just add, so when you're visiting those districts of the candidates and you're just blindly walking around, what the candidates will do and I can tell from my past experience will arrange things for you. Who is at this school and meet with these curriculum directors and meet with these administrators. They'll hopefully line that all up for you, so you're not just like blindly walking around the school and the admin's business. So they arrange your visits as well too. And that's what Telltale is like, how that's coordinated on their map.
Yes, unless you think that that means that they're stacking the deck, because sometimes that's what, right? You're not going to say anything negative. Um, you would be amazed at the conversations you have if you actually spend time in the districts. So one of the things that I very strongly recommend, there are school committees that skip that step. Um, I actually really strongly recommend committees figure out a way to make it work. Um, because you're not, you're not really going to get as much information as you possibly could have at your disposal unless you can actually send people in to visit all the districts. It is, it is, it is a commitment, but I think it's a valuable use of your time. And yes, to the point, right, this is when the committee is having the search put back in your hands and now it's a question of, okay, these are the individuals we have. How do we make sure we have as much information as possible? So you have the entirety of their application packet. Um, you have, you have whatever experience you're going to have in their district. Then the other thing that I just will add, since we're talking about this, is frequently, school committees will ask that there be a feedback form that's put out into your district um, about each of the finalists that then comes to you, um, for the day that they spend in the district. So this is the person that I met. Here's the context in which I met them. Um, one of the things that I I strongly recommend, because you already have set what your selection criteria is, is to continue to sort of push the selection criteria. So search committee is going to get that as their rhetoric of what they need to be evaluating based on. Um, you can certainly also make it part of the feedback that you're getting from the school, the district as a whole, on the finalists when they visit.
When do the finalists visit?
The finalists would visit during the weeks of November 17th and 24th.
Oh, they come, oh, okay.
Yep, that's, I think you're out in both directions, yes. And to complete that thought, all visits would happen before your interviews.
But wait, when they come to visit us, they're just going to go with Al? They don't need school committee?
They don't need school committee, no. So what they would do, and I wouldn't necessarily even say they're going to be escorted by the superintendent. I think it can be good to, should give them a little bit of looseness too. But they certainly would spend time in each of the schools, um, certainly would, you know, spend time with each of the principals, would meet some students, meet some teachers. Um, also, I'd recommend that they spend some time in the central administration. And then I usually recommend also that you set up a meet and greet session. Um, so that parents, members of the public and so forth, not a sort of, you know, a grill them Q and A, but a who is this person who might be our next superintendent kind of opportunity. And that's why you do it over multiple days, because you want to sort of give them the day in the district and then give them an afternoon. And that then also gives you more, um, more people who potentially can contribute to the feedback of having seen them in the district.
Okay, my only worry is like to meet and greet for families and community members the week of Thanksgiving. Nobody's going to show up.
It's the week before.
We could do the week before.
No, so the 17th is the week before. So it's the week before and Monday, Tuesday.
So it's going to be a question of whether or not there, everyone is available to be able to.
Yeah.
So it's, that's why I'm giving you both weeks, because you also don't want to be doing interviews the week of the 24th.
Yeah, that's, yeah, right. Okay, this is, I'm totally clear, so thank you.
You're welcome. No, thank you for asking the question. So I think it not only is important for you all to know, but it also clears things up, I think, for the community in terms of, you know, then what happens next is, I think, a really important part. Um, so in terms of the search committee, right, um, would recommend that you have one central administrator. So, and I, again, I'm going to say, recommend that you have it selected by central administration for two reasons. First of all, it has to be somebody who actually meets the meetings, right? But also let them pick someone that they trust to be their voice. Um, similarly, if you choose to have a principal, you need to make sure somebody can actually be in the meetings. Similarly, if you choose to have a principal, you need to make sure somebody can actually be in the meetings. And also, you have principals who have a variety of levels of experience from the district, let them decide who they want to have on forward. I do recommend having at least one student, possibly two, sometimes students do better if there's more than one. If you have, there are districts that do it by having their student rep, if their student rep can make it. There are districts that have it chosen by student council, there are districts that have students volunteer, and we, you know, we essentially draw names out of a hat based on who can make it and representation.
Bolder kids though, or you're not talking little ones?
So secondary, certainly, I have had students as young as a 7th grade. Generally is high school, but it certainly doesn't have to be. I will say that, quite honestly, the one benefit I find in working with students is they're accustomed to having homework, so when it comes to things like, I need your question by X day, students are in on it. So that can be a valuable perspective. I would assume, I would presume that if you were gonna put this together, you would wanna have both teachers and parents, and then you start getting into questions of balance, right? So do you wanna make sure that you're representing towns, do you wanna make sure that you're representing schools? Certainly, you wanna make sure that you've got at least one from each town, and then do you want to make sure that there is representation of each of the schools, or does it not particularly matter necessarily as much? Keeping in mind, of course, by the way, that sometimes parents actually have students at work in the school. So sometimes you can say, we're going to represent both the elementary school and the high school in a single individual, that's possible. Similarly, you would want to do the same thing with teachers. And again, one of the things that I will say for really all of these sorts of positions is there are two choices that you have in front of you, first of all, this is entirely under your purview. If you wanna have applications come in and do you wanna actually vote individuals, that is something that is an authority that you can choose to use. My recommendation, as someone who's advising you on this process, is that you not do that because you don't actually need more sources of conflict in your life, and have you individually voting people that you know and live with and live around, up or down, can be a way of making yourself unpopular in ways. What I have had to happen, you can certainly do that if you want to, there are committees that choose you. I have had committees in the past say, we wanna make sure that we have one parent from Berlin, one parent from Boylston, we wanna make sure that we have one teacher from each of the elementary schools, we wanna make sure that we have at least some, and I'm being, like, these are things I've seen in the past, someone among those that has experience with special education, or someone among those who has experience with English learners, whatever the things are that you think are most important. In which case, what I do is I run up a Google form, I, we open that link up to the community, they all come to me, and then I balance the committee. We make sure that we've got the towns, we make sure that we've got the experience. I try to make sure that we've got things like people who worked here a long time, who haven't worked here very long, or people who grew up in this town and people who didn't. So that is another option that's available to you. The only other thing that I have not mentioned, which can be, well, two things I have mentioned which could be useful. One is having non-teaching staff have at least one seat on the committee is a valuable perspective to have, and that could be another one where you can take applications and vote, or you can run up an application. You know, that's nutrition, nurses, custodial, secretary. And the other thing is you can decide whether or not you would want to have specifically town voices on. There are committees that choose to do that, and how you do that, again, is entirely up to you, though again, they do have to make all the meetings, we don't make exceptions for, you know, what have you. But there are committees that say, we want to have select board, or a town employee, or there are committees that have chosen to see if they can get police chiefs to serve, or just generally public safety to serve, sometimes inspire. That is up to you. I will say, the only additional points I will make, Mr. Chair, is it's good to have a non-number. I don't really need to tell you all that. And that it also, once you start getting up above 11, it starts to get a little unmovable.
Tracy, would, talking about parents, would we be able to get specific enough to say possibly a parent of a school choice student, since they know?
You could do that as well, yes, in fact, so I haven't run into it in my area, but I certainly have seen that done in other communities. And for, and also, when I did, when I did the search for Mahar, they also had New Sandman Wendell, which are not members of the region, but send their students there, and they had representation that way. So that, yes, that is certainly something you can do.
All right, so it's us to discuss?
It's up for you to discuss.
So I like that idea, Mike, I, I think maybe having a parent from Berlin, from Berlin and Boylston, and then maybe, like, from the elementary schools, and then maybe a school choice parent from Tejantow, or however that mix, like, do you wanna represent the same, the three schools with the three parents?
Ideally.
Because, the only reason I'm putting the school choice parent at Tejantow is because Tejantow is Berlin and Boylston. And so that school choice person would definitely have.
Right.
Yeah. Anybody have thoughts on that?
That sounds good, then you have three parents, so Tracy, what's the problem, you think like nine? You said 11 is too much, so you said an odd number, so is nine, like, what's the sweet spot?
I started to get itchy after 11, 11 is nine.
11, all right.
11 is nine.
Yeah. And then?
I mean, a lot of people have kids in both, like, you know, in elementary school and Tejantow, so I mean, that would be amazing, because then they see the gamut, you know?
So maybe your parent, you try to find someone that has kids in both, and then you take, I like the idea of taking the school choice parent, I agree with that, because it's a different perspective. And then for teachers, you could do like, it's so hard, because it's like, a teacher from?
One from each school, with one of them being special ed.
I was just gonna say that, yeah, so like, three, one from each school with one having.
Yeah, it doesn't matter what school that person comes from.
So we're now almost, we're more than halfway to the left.
So, so I mean, but with the teachers, it would be great to have some bounds between newer and longevity here, sorry.
Yeah, depending on who volunteers, yeah.
It's gonna, yeah, because I feel like the time committed is kind of extensive, so some people may be like, yeah, no, I can't.
Yeah, the more detailed we get, the more difficult it will be to fill.
For sure, well, just the whole, you have to kind of be wide open, the week of November 3rd to the 7th, some people might be like, yeah, I'm not willing to.
Sure.
Sure. So central admin will have one person from there, so there's, we're at seven people now, right, six, seven?
Can I go back to the chairs for two seconds? It would also, again, not a criteria, but it would be swell if we could have like, English or reading, or science, or gen ed, or, or some, some variety there too, although I guess B M S, they do, but.
Well, you got one elementary, one from both towns, and then one.
Do we go to Tejantow?
Tejantow, right?
There's a Tejantow one, so.
So the Tejantow one is gonna be, unless we wanna have multiple from Tejantow, and then how do you overrepresent Tejantow and not represent the elementary, so, one from each school?
Well, so like, if, if, grade of fourth or they switch, right? So I guess if, if one's like a 4th or 5th grade teacher doing more of the writing and the?
Well, like Tracy said, let's get into a lot of specifics.
For sure, I just, it would be swell if we could kind of balance the sciences and the reading.
Who's gonna, what if we have like so many people that apply to we, like you said, do you just pick them, like, first come, first served, can we just say first come, first served?
So she said we could, we could specify names if we wanted to get into that. Or we could just have Tracy balance it out within?
I like that.
Each of the positions here, so like, within the teachers, she balances out B M S, P E S, Tejantow.
So you'll just pick them?
This is your decision.
I like that either, I don't think we should be picking, because then someone's gonna be like, you guys picked, dah 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 dah, and I say, all right, yeah, I don't think, so I agree, you're totally neutral, you don't know half these people, so you can just be like, okay, what do you teach, what do you do? And then from the parents, who are you, like, what are, where are your students?
Google form, right, you're gonna send out a Google form?
Google form, and I, and that is exactly what we do, is we say, you know, check off if you act, if you have experience with special education, we can certainly put something in there that says that if you are a subject matter teacher, what is the subject that you teach? We can, I, one of the things I can certainly, that I can certainly leave them to give me is the, the number of years they've had in the district, or if they live, if it's a parent, you know, have they always lived here? So those are certainly things we can balance out.
So numbers wise, we have three parents, we have three teachers, that's six total right now. She suggested a central admin staff, so that would be seven.
School committee members, yeah?
That would be seven, she mentioned possibly a principal, that would be eight.
No, I thought that was included in the central admin staff.
No, I would separate that out.
You did separate, yeah.
So wait, so go back, who's central admin staff then?
Central office.
Essentially, anybody who works, and, and I would be expansive there, because you have, you have payroll, and you have?
Could be any of those people?
I think, I, I mean, and again, sort of giving it to them to say, who do they want their voice at the table to be? But I do think that they have a different perspective than principals would.
Under, under a principal role, would you expand that to include assistant, or the vice principal?
It does allow you to go from having three to having five.
Big pool.
And it would be people that would be able to commit to those dates as well.
Exactly, so that's the first thing, the first ask that goes out, is I send out an email and say?
Jess had, Jess had made a comment, they're not deciding amongst themselves, they're deciding if they wanna be the person. They'll let Tracy know, and then it's either a random draw, or you balance it out.
So I mean, which one?
You're, oh, the principals.
So the principal, for the principals, I mean, again, to your point, you're talking about either three or five people. So the first question is, how many of those people can even meet the meetings? And then, then I would say to that the principals sort of figure this out yourselves, because there's, you're, not everybody's gonna be able to just commit to the dates. And then, given that first parameter, who does that leave you with? And then given who you are left with, who would you then, as a group, want to send forward? That would be my recommendation, because I would say this.
We want to send forward?
Who, I would say have them say who they want to send forward.
As a representative?
As a representative.
Okay.
I kind of feel like maybe Al should pick the central admin.
I think that's probably not something you wanna have your current superintendent involved in.
All right.
It just felt very, Tracy, that individually, every single person in central office has individual needs with them, so they have thoughts that they, they want to be actively involved in this.
And they also did do know that if you chose to have a seat, that there would be a, you know, that that representative would be representing kind of everybody who works in that space.
So to go back over, so we have three seats for parents, three seats for teachers, that's six. A seat for central admin is seven, a seat for a principal level is eight. Students, so that leaves us with students, do we wanna do students, do we want one student, two students? Do we wanna do the student rep, which is Matthew? What do we wanna do there?
I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable deciding if Matt can make, I think that's something, we gotta, obviously, he might be like, yeah, it's my senior year, no thanks.
So lead it to one student, everybody who's interested, put it in there, put it in the hat?
What if you don't get any students?
Oh, I think.
I mean, the first thing is try to be shocked.
Oh, are they, are they like? The reaction that you had, didn't you say you had a large group that came in here and wanted to be heard?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Yeah, no, so I will say, and, and part of the, here's the one thing that I will say, is that part of the reason that I also give as much flexibility in the semi-finalist interviews is the one conflict that we sometimes run into is sports schedules. And I will make sure that when we're sending the interviews, the search committee knows, okay, but so-and-so has a track meet on Wednesday, can we make sure that we start the interviews on? So we, we, students are the one place where we try to be flexible in terms of things like meetings.
Okay.
So yes, it's up to you if you wanna, if you want to have your first ask go to your school committee rep, you certainly can, or you can simply say, let's send it out to all of the student body, or whatever aspect of the student body.
Nice thing to do. I just, I just think, my, the only reason I was suggesting that we go with him, like, I always like to give everybody an opportunity, is that he knows so much of the business of the district already, so if he could do it, he knows things that we've been working on, and and he's seeing, he has an opinion about different things too, you know? So he sees the inner workings, that's why I think he'd be such an asset if he wanted to.
I've had him a couple times this year already, he is one active young man.
So he may be busy.
No, no, what I'm saying, he would definitely, I think, might be very interested in this, he is definitely.
Because it's not just.
Do we wanna give him first choice, and then after that, if it's not him, go the different route?
You could, you could say, essentially say he has written a first refusal, right?
I like that.
So we have the?
Yeah, let's do that.
And then, and then what we'll do is, once, we find out if he can do it or not, if he doesn't, I'll just then move forward with giving a same sort of, we'll create an application.
How was he chosen, elected, or?
I think it's administration suggestion.
I don't know about that.
He's actively involved with the senior class, he's actively involved with the.
Especially he's the president of the senior class.
What I meant by active, he's definitely a wholesale R, R, not a student in that district.
But every year we have, well, he's, this is the first time we've had a kid for two years, we had someone else the year before him, and then we had someone before that, I don't know how those, those kids were chosen, I don't know if they volunteered.
They were chosen by the principal.
Principal, okay.
So if we do one student, that's nine.
Yep.
We haven't talked about school committee yet, assuming the school committee is two people, that's 11. Is there? Do you wanna do anybody else?
Town, I don't know.
I just feel like.
That starts to get pretty big.
Too many cooks in the kitchen, yeah, and it's.
Well, then you gotta do both towns.
You'd have to do both towns.
We're at 13.
We'd have to go to 13.
No, I'm saying if we go to 13, it's an unlucky number, I'm just.
Oh, yeah. Or, and if you do towns, what about non-teaching staff? I mean, those people deserve, they actually work at the district.
Yeah, that, that, that 11 does not include the non-teaching staff.
Right, and I would do a non-teaching staff before I went up to the towns.
What if we did two students and non-teaching staff, that would give us 13.
Say that again?
If we, instead of doing one student, we do two students, and then add a non-teaching staff position, that would be 13.
And have no school committee members on it?
No, that includes two school committees.
Oh, then we're up to 13?
Yes.
Lori says it's unlucky.
No, I mean, I, I get married on July 13th, it's been very lucky for me, so.
Oh, 13 is unlucky for you?
But I'm just, I mean, I don't know if you want, to your point, Megan, too many cooks in the kitchen, I don't. At what, do you think that's an unwieldy number, do you think it's better at 11?
13, honey.
Part of me thinks maybe we just don't do any school committee people on there, what do you think about that?
What if you do one and then one student, one non-teaching staff?
Which town gets the one committee member?
I don't think we should do any, I think either, yeah, it's too hard to have, we all have, it's out, out there, we all have different opinions on everything, right? So I kind of like having the two students, I love getting the student perspective out there, and maybe having a non-teaching staff person, and we're literally getting our candidates from the community, so.
I think we need school committee members on there.
You think so?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
So.
Someone just comes as like an oversight.
Got a question on that, let's, let's say we don't do that, let's say we do that, no school committee members, right? We go through this process, the person is hired, there's a problem. I don't know what the problem could be, but there's a problem with this person in the future. Who's the first person that's gonna get the blame for whatever the problem is? It's the six people that sit in this room, it's not the 13 people on this list. So do you wanna, do you, do you trust those people enough to then take on the, the responsibility for their decision?
I mean, to the point of choosing Matt, it's someone who knows, like, you know, since everybody's.
It's not, it's not, it's not to disparage anyone who would be on this group.
No, 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 but my point is, that, that, one of the, the selling points of Matt is that he knows a lot of the inner workings because he's present for them.
You know, when I talk about Matt right now.
No, no, I know, but I'm saying, if we're talking about us, and we take us out, and we're the ones that, like, think about, since you've become a school committee member, how much more you know in the inner workings and the things that we need to work on, and we, like, I would hate to not have that voice there too, I think that's an important voice. We're, we're significantly outnumbered, so it's not like whoever's on the committee is going to steer it in a certain way, because there's balance there, but I think you do need people who know what's going on to, to be able to say, you know, this is, we need someone who's strong in this or that, and it's gonna differ from the other people, but it, it makes a healthy conversation, is what I think.
That's, that's actually a really good point.
So the school committee's one of three main jobs, is policy, budget, and hiring, and being responsible for the superintendent. This whole process, and you're all elected to be that, the, the, the people elect you to do that. This process takes a little bit of that away from this committee. Do you wanna, do you wanna go even further down that line? Or like what Lori said, at least have that perspective in the room. Can't be overpowering, because it's a numbers issue, but at least have that perspective in the room.
I would also like to continue that line of thinking, is that one of our biggest things in this community profile and what we want, you know, the selection criteria, is communication with, a negotiation with the townspeople, right? So I would argue that Berlin, I think, had a representative in the last negotiation, so perhaps then Boylston could be offered the next one, or we could, you know, pull from a hat, you know, Tracy could pull for a hat for any interested town administrators or others.
And the negotiation for the salary, you mean, or the contract?
No, no, for this committee. So just because I think.
Oh, did Berlin have one on the last superintendent search? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know.
No, so the last.
Oh, you mean for the negotiations, so they take turns, so when Lori and I did it in '22, it was a Boylston.
Yeah, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves to the negotiation at this point.
No, she, she was doing it that way for, she was saying, because Berlin got to do negotiations, why don't you have a Boylston, be, just do one town, or one student, one non-teaching, I think that's. Maybe just do one town rep, one student, one non-teaching, I think that's what she was trying to do.
Or just pull from a hat, Berlin, Boylston, you know.
Just do one town rep.
Town employer select board police fired, and that way we're not expanding it by two.
There, you might even not get town reps, you might, that decision might make it themselves. I, I don't think they, my, my, you know, again, who wants more meetings? Some of them, when we did negotiations, it wasn't like, I want to do it, I want to do it. It was like, it's your turn this year. Um, so I, you know, in my decided self, if you just are, like, we're gonna take one town rep. I don't know.
Any thoughts?
I mean, I, I wonder if Tracy could reach out, like, we, what if we, I'm sure the central office and the principal, that's gonna be fine. I, there's gonna be no issues getting parents and teachers, um, or non-teaching staff. You think there'll be no issues getting two students?
I think there'll be no issues getting two students. I agree with you that, that town is often an issue. And also, it can be that having, um, town people that commit to the time um, required can be a challenge, which isn't to say not to try, just that, that, that is one thing that I have run into in the past.
So perhaps, again, just turns out that you could say town employee select board fire police or towns person. I mean, I don't know.
Personally, I'm against that. Are they, are the towns going to come to you for school committee advice on who the next police chief is?
But we involve them in negotiations, and that's part of our, we want.
For a teacher's contract, because that's the way the state law reads, not for the other contracts. There's no other contracts that they do. Uh, I just, I think at this point, we're getting pretty large. We're at thirteen if we do this. Now we're talking about adding a fourteenth. We would want to keep it odd, so we would add to a fifteenth, and that's what Tracy said, it starts to get pretty tough.
So I would counter that, maybe consider that one student again instead of the two, and do the town select person, person, you know, towns person. And if there's no one that comes forward, then it goes back to the second student. I don't know.
Are there any town people that are also parents?
I mean, I've had townspeople approach me and say, when, when is this the, the thing? So I mean, there are people interested.
The chair of the Boylston select board is also a parent. He has three children in the school district. Um, but again, I would never want to speak for, to say if he would be interested. I know there's people on the FinCom that have had kids go through schools. They might not currently be in the school. Um, I don't know about Berlin. I don't think there's, I don't know.
He's the new person on FinCom that has kids, but.
Okay.
We did a community forum, right, with Tracy, I think, but, um, no one showed up at all at our community forum, so Tracy did a little.
Oh, really?
Yeah, not, not, Tracy and I were there.
But the one in Tonto?
Yes, that one, that was for both towns.
No one showed up at that one? That was like the eighteenth or whatever?
It was for both towns.
That was like the community, not the town. I remember that. Nope, not one person showed up?
Tracy and I.
I would, I would value two students over FinCom or select board.
Well, and I, I also think the other problem we get into is we're being really particular about equity as far as representation from towns. And this one town over another, even though it's negotiations which are totally unrelated, I just worry that it would offend the other town that that town was chosen.
If we say it's out of a hat, I mean, whoever could apply and.
Knowing people and how they are, I'm not sure. Even, even doing it a fair way like that would probably cause some issues.
I guess, I don't know, I'm just not having a towns person, like.
The, the six people in this room and the two people who would be on the search committee are technically the towns representatives for the schools. We are voted in.
I can't, I, I kind of, I kind of agree with Mike on this because here's the thing, when they're going to hire like an accountant or a chief of police or, uh, um, the town administrator, the schools have absolutely no say, even though that's like half of the budget and it determines, you know.
The FinComs are appointed.
The FinComs are appointed. We have no say, even though they're literally yaying or nailing our budget, which makes or breaks, you know, how things can go at town meetings, so. I think it would be great if we didn't have, if we were a community where we didn't have so many parents. Um, but I, and again, I agree with Laurie, I think it is going to be important to have school committee members. And I, I, I love the idea of having the student voice.
No, I'm not disputing.
No, I know. So it's like if, if it's gonna be.
Tracy, if we were to do two students, could you do it in such a way that we had two students from either two different towns or one from one town and one that was school choice? If you had enough applicants, that way we had different voices?
Yep, and I mean, I think the, the question, if the, the student rep has a right of first refusal, then that, you know, sort of already sets us in one direction.
That's true.
And also, I'd say arts and sports too are two, potentially two opposing people, or could be one.
That's a good point.
That's.
Yeah, and keep the town person out.
Mass and arts, I think, right, and sports. I don't know. So we're at one central admin, a principal level, that's two, two students, that's four, three teachers is seven, three parents is ten, a non-teaching staff is eleven, and two school committees are thirteen.
Tracy's gonna pick the people, people will reach out, you'll reach out, people have to reach out to you.
We'll have the, um, so we'll send an email out to those, the groups that have their, are doing their own selection. Um, we'll have, open an application together for the teachers, one for the parents, um, one for the non-teaching staff. We'll get in touch with the student rep and see if he can make the, um, the meetings, and then send out a student application based either for two people or for one, and balance the towns.
Do you have times for these meetings? Because I just feel like tomorrow, people are gonna start being like, what time are the meetings? Are they called five or?
So, um, I would, I would start the search committee meeting at six, and then I would check with the community, with the members of the search committee as to what time we start the twenty-seventh. Interviews are going to entirely depend on how many interviews there are.
Right, so it's just people have to have availability that day?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Tracy's an assistant principal, what was that final decision on that?
I think we're talking including the assistant.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I think the only remaining decision you have then, Mr. Chair, is the members of the school committee to serve on that.
Right. So we do have a search subcommittee already, uh, which is currently Laurie and Beth. Does anyone not think that's a good idea, or does anyone want to suggest something else? That's Laurie, uh, is from Boylston. She's the longest standing member on the school committee. She's the only one of us who participated in a superintendent search previously. Representative Boylston. Then for a Berlin representative, it would be Lisa, myself, or Beth. Beth, you're, you're already been named to it. You're the newest member of the committee. You have students. You don't currently have anyone at BMS, but you've gone through BMS and currently at Tonto, so you have that experience. I personally think you're, because of that experience with Tonto, I think you'd be the best choice from Berlin, but I'm open to any other ideas.
I would also be interested. So Laurie and I ran in a contested election and we both won. Um, I have kids in the elementary school in Tonto. I was also a former student here too. Um, and so I have blocked on my schedule to, to do that as well. I was also on the prior superintendent committee.
Okay. Anything else?
Lisa, if you have a preference for doing it, I don't.
No, I was just wondering, like, are you up for it?
I'm fine with that, I just don't want to, I just wanted to. I assume I just don't want it.
I was just trying to check if I'm aware.
I'm not gonna put myself on it because I don't want to attract any comments about what's this asshole doing. I'm not putting myself on it.
No, it is.
Fair enough.
I'd support Jess being on it. I think, um, Laurie, you do so much. I just feel like your plate is so heavy. So, um, I think if Jess wants to step up, I will just say I cannot commit to all those dates, so.
And I am aware for part of that, at least one of the days, so.
So I, I guess.
You're, are, are the three of you, you said you're available. Are you available? Are you available?
I'm available. I have an extremely flexible schedule.
All right, um, it currently sits as you two, but I'll put it out to a vote, so could I have a motion to remain with Laurie and Beth on the search subcommittee? Yeah, no.
Can we discuss, is it possible to find another Berlin rep somewhere in these numbers to allow?
It's Lisa.
No, not, not from the school committee. I'm like.
You can't have four school committee, yeah.
No, I mean, from either like, uh, an extra Berlin parent or an extra BMS parent, like, I feel badly. That if I were to say, why don't we let Jess, and we have two Boylston reps, we find some more Berlin representation somewhere else.
I mean, also, Boylston is sixty-five percent of the district and Berlin is thirty-five percent, so we're equal everywhere else. So if you had, if you were like, I don't care, Jess, you can do it, I don't want to do it, if that's what you're saying, like, I don't think that would be, we're two, it's two school committee reps.
We don't wait our votes according to the regional agreement, so. The, the size of the towns don't matter, it's three and three. It's, you know, it's equal representation from both towns.
Yeah, for our votes, but for this committee, I don't think it would matter if we have one extra Boylston person over Berlin person, I think is.
I think it.
It's not gonna be equal. It's gonna end up being, because we have an odd number.
I think it completely matters from the committee's perspective, as the only people on the search committee who are actually elected by the towns, that each town would want at least one person.
Both of you were elected in elections that both towns voted in, right?
If you don't, if you don't want to be on it.
I, I know that Jess feels strongly about this. I don't want to take away from someone that feels, has a strong drive for it. I, I don't feel.
I, I appreciate that. I don't think we should put two members from either town on the search committee. If you don't want to be the member from Berlin, that's one thing. If Laurie doesn't want to be from Boylston, that's another thing. But I don't think we should do two from one town, whether it's Berlin or Boylston.
But even once you get into this, like, you, you, the teachers, a lot of the teachers live in Boylston. You could end up with a heavy, like, if we're gonna start really.
But they're, they're on it as a representative of teachers, right, from the school, so it would be whether it's BMS or BES or Tonto.
My husband grew up in Berlin. My in-laws live in Berlin. You know, he went to Tonto, he went to BMS. My, my sister-in-law did too. My brother went to Tonto, BES. So I, I have long-term interest in this decision. I have a child in third grade and I have a child in seventh grade. And I plan to be buried at the end of my street, Scarry Hill Road, so I do feel very strongly about this. Yeah, no bought property there already, twenty-twenty, so I feel very strongly about this. And I was on the negotiations subcommittee and I was removed on the phone in between meetings. Without discussion, I was removed from the superintendent search committee or whatever subcommittee without discussion. And yes, I didn't say anything in that particular meeting because I was blindsided by that particular, I guessed wrong what I was gonna be blindsided about at that particular meeting. So I like to see information beforehand. I like to make an educated decision about it. Yes, I was not involved in the prior superintendent search, but that did not end well, so I would, not that I am blaming anyone, there was many years of good superintendent years of that, but I would like.
The search, the previous search, didn't you?
Previous search. No, the end result. So regardless of that, I would very strongly like to be on this committee as a Boylston rep.
So could I, I did not come in here intending to defend, but, um, or to, to buy for this.
I'm sorry, none of what I said is against you. This is what I represent.
Yeah, and so I guess I'll just put myself out there. I was on the last superintendent search committee. I've been on this committee since February of two thousand twenty, which is very ironic if you think about the timing of mine coming onto the school committee. Not the most ideal time to be on a school committee. Um, I've been through several superintendents. I'm a former teacher. I am certified, I'm recertified to teach. I'm certified to be an administrator. Um, I went to school for administration. I have a master's in that. Um, this district is my passion. I have a daughter who graduated, um, from Tonto. I have two children that went through BES. Um, two children that went through Tonto as well. Um, I care about this town and I would love to be on the search committee. If that's what people want, I will abide by whatever the will of the committee is. Um, I've been passionate about this since being nominated as chair by Megan. Um, you know, I've worked with Tracy, I've worked with Al on getting the information and everything. But whatever the committee decides, that's okay. I mean, I think Jess is qualified as well. Um, I just wanted to, you know, I don't want to make it seem like I'm like, you know, not interested. Um, so.
No, I appreciate the time you've given this committee and the respect that you have given in those roles. Um, nothing I said was to disparage you in any way.
Oh, I know that, Jess. Thank you for saying that, though.
Since we have two people that really strongly want to do it, I feel like we should do it.
Me too, I agree. Uh, Beth, unless you want to give us your resume, I was kidding. I have no resume.
I, I would suggest, if we're not going to put equal representation from the towns on this committee, then we wouldn't put anyone on the committee for it. I don't think that's a good idea. I think someone from Berlin and someone from Boylston should be on it. Right now, there's two people from Boylston who want to be on it. Let's do a vote.
Wait. Yeah.
So, well, could I have a motion to elect Laurie as the Boylston representative?
Well, we have the opportunity to vote another vote.
Why don't we just say, why don't we just do an informal?
If Laurie vote, if Laurie's voted no, then we would go to Jess.
Why don't we just do an informal vote before we do a motion? What?
Raise your hand who you want, type of thing?
No, just don't have that on motion, just like, who's interested in Jess, who's interested in Laurie, who's interested in Beth?
Let's just handle, let's just handle Boylston for right now.
I personally agree with Lisa, and I think you should just have Laurie and Jess. If Beth is saying, I, like, I can't.
We'll vote whether we're comfortable with having two Boylston reps first, and then move more from there.
Want to do that? Sure. Could I have a motion to include two Boylston school committee representatives on the search committee and no Berlin representatives?
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
Lisa? All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
That's four. Anyone against?
No.
I'm against. That's four-two. So you guys have two Boylston members on your search committee. I think that's a terrible idea. We'll see what Berlin has to say about that tomorrow.
Is there any way that we can balance out the Berlin representation by like, having an extra person?
There's only, there's only six school committee members who are.
What town does he come from?
No, I mean, like, in one of these other groups.
The student, you know, like.
I'm sure you could, but it's, the point is, you have two elected officials from Boylston on this now, with none from Berlin. You could have everyone else on here be from Berlin, but there's no elected representative from Berlin.
So I think that's, that's a really good point, but also, we have to take into consideration the passion that these two members have for this. And we know that we can trust them and.
And we're asking all these people that if they have availability, and it's, we may not get the perfect mix of people, because we're asking for full availability.
So it's voted now, so that's what it is, what it is.
All right, so do we need to name the members?
Uh, it's Beth, it's, uh.
But your, your motion just said you have two Boylston people, so.
All right, so motion to, motion to elect Jess and Laurie as the members on the search screening committee.
So moved.
All right, Megan and Lisa, all those in favor?
I.
All right, anyone against? I'm against.
I'm against.
All right, that motion passed, it's four-to-two. All right, there it is. Uh, we still have to vote, I think, on the other members, or did we already vote on that? We need to vote on the other members, I think, right?
In, in terms of the makeup of the rest?
The makeup of the positions, yeah. All right, so could I have a motion, please, to have one central administrative office representative, one representative from the principal slash assistant principal group, uh, two student representatives with the right of first refusal going to our, uh, school committee rep, Matt, uh, three teacher representatives, one from each school, uh, three parent representatives, uh, one from Berlin, one from Boylston, and a school choice parent, and.
School choice from Tonto.
Yeah, school choice from Tonto, and one, uh, non-teaching staff position.
So moved.
All right, Laurie?
Second.
Megan?
I'd like to amend that motion to say the second student is from Berlin, and that the non-teachings, the one non-teaching staff is also from Berlin.
All right, that's a.
So the, just to clarify, um, would that depend on whether or not the, your student rep can actually serve? If what you're looking at is towns?
Yes.
Is, is Matt Boylston or Berlin?
Okay, that's in Boylston. I guess, so then.
I would say.
No, no one second that. So, so the, the amendment would be that the students have a balance, Berlin, Boylston, and.
Or school choice.
Or school choice, yeah. Um, then I guess, though, if student choice, if they attended elementary school, preference towards BMS attending. No, that's getting wasted.
You're starting to get really, really detailed.
So, yeah. Anyway, so how about the motion is just balance between the two students, between the towns, or school choice, and then one non-teaching staff under, with preference towards Berlin?
So from BMS.
From BMS, yeah.
Though most of the student, most of the non-teaching staff actually works at Tohonto.
Is non-teaching staff, uh, like, cafeteria, custodial? What about paraprofessionals?
Paraprofessionals, yep. And that's not to say that there isn't, you know, some at every elementary school, I'm just thinking in terms of broad numbers. You have a very good chance of getting someone from Tohonto. So I, I, it might be wise not to try to delve into that too deeply in terms of both the students and the, the non-teaching.
So then amendment with effort, just to have represent Berlin, Boylston, or student choice for the students, and then preference towards Tohonto or BMS, non-teaching staff. That's my final amendment. We need a motion, please, on the table.
No one has seconded that.
Seconded?
Lisa seconded it. Do you have that, Tracy? All right, so we're voting on the amendments. Has anybody had any questions about it?
No, she's just saying if possible, give preference to Berlin for the.
So no questions.
Non-teaching staff.
Right.
I'm just trying to clarify it. So you're saying if possible, give preference to the non, for the non, to Berlin, for the non-teaching staff?
Berlin or Tohonto.
In the second student. Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against it? All right, that motion passes. We're now onto the original motion as amended. Any questions on that? All right, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Anyone against it? All right, the motion passes as well. Tracy, I think you have our, uh, instructions?
I do. I do have one additional question, because you chose specific members of the search committee. Do you wish to appoint a chair of the search committee, or do you want them to elect their own chair?
Uh, let them elect their own.
Agreed. Do we need to vote on that?
So, so just one?
No, that's fine. I, I, if you were going to appoint a chair, I would ask you to, and, because sometimes when there are school committee members on, they have, they elect, they, the school committee says, and this is your chair. If you want them to elect their own chair, you're taking no action means a failure.
Yeah. And just for one quick, quite a clacky amount of doubt, he's a school choice student.
Oh, 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 sure.
Same Berlin, Boylston have all of their places.
Whenever it started, it may be.
The other town.
Great.
Uh, Tracy, anything else you need?
No, that's everything. Um, I will work with the administration to make sure that those who do self-selection are doing self-selection, and, um, work over the next couple of days to get the application up. And as soon as your invitation to apply with the application for the superintendent search goes up, I'll let you know.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Megan and Laurie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, to adjourn. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Welcome.
Thank you.